I call to the board of the Wicco City Council meeting on September 10, 2018. Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Here.
Bogo?
Present.
Jaworski?
Here.
Koski?
Here.
Levon?
Here.
Sekus?
Here.
Saloto?
Here.
Approval of city council minutes.
Mr. Council President, I'd like to make a motion to allow Councilwoman Koski and Councilwoman Saloto to abstain from the minutes on June 25.
Second, by Councilman Jaworski and second by Councilman Bogo to allow Councilwoman Koski and Councilwoman Saloto to abstain from voting on the meeting minutes of June 25. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Yes, I see.
Move to adopt.
Second, moved by Councilman Jaworski and second by Councilman Bogo to adopt the city, to approve the city council minutes of June 25, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Stand.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Approval of tax budget hearing meeting on June 25, 2018.
I make a motion to allow council members Koski and Saloto to abstain from voting on the minutes of the tax budget on June 25.
Second, moved by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Bogo to allow Councilwoman Koski and Councilwoman Saloto to abstain on the council, on the tax budget hearing meeting minutes of June 25, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
I wish to do a draft. Second, moved by Councilman Sekus, second by Councilman Bogo to adopt the approval of the tax budget hearing minutes of June 25, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Stand.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
I make a motion to allow Councilwoman Koski to abstain from voting on the special meeting minutes of June 26.
Second, moved by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Bogo to allow Councilwoman Koski to abstain for the special, abstain for the approval of the special council meeting minutes of June 26. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Discussion? Second, moved by Councilman Jaworski, second by Yandelila to approve the special council meeting minutes of June 26, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Stand.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
I make a motion, Mr. Council President, to allow council members Koski and Saloto to abstain from voting on the meeting of the special council on June 27.
Second, moved by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Bogo to allow Councilwoman Koski and Councilwoman Saloto to abstain from the approval of special council meeting minutes of June 27, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Adoption. Second, moved by Councilman Sekus, second by Councilman Yandelila to approve special council meeting minutes of June 27, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Stand.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Abstain.
Approval of special council meeting minutes of August 27, 2018.
So vote.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilwoman Koski to approve the special council meeting minutes of August 27, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sekus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Report to Communications from the Mayor Safety Director.
Yes, good evening, everybody. To expound on my written report, the feasibility study with Blue Stem Energy and Enterprise HVAC Service and Control, they both work a little bit differently. With Blue Stem Energy, let's say if they come back and tell us it makes sense to have solar panels on the police station, the fire station, we'll have a full feasibility study that we'll discuss in committee. What they do is, if it made sense, they would build, operate, and maintain the actual equipment and sell us the energy at a lower kilowatt per hour than we're paying now, if that makes sense. They said it's about a six-month process to have some factual information that we can discuss. Same with Enterprise HVAC, they focus on everything other than solar and the wind, so we'll be looking at all of our buildings, all our utilities. I thought it made sense to engage with them after the Service Director, De Broja, had said how difficult it was at some point to find other HVAC people that would deal with such large buildings as well. So just trying to be more efficient with what we have. The NOPAC grant, that focusing on converting the high-pressure sodium streetlights to LEDs, and what actually we're going to do is, it's on, uh...
Jaworski?
Correct.
Frank.
So we're going to do a different wattage light at each end of the street, so that we can, our residents can check it out, we can drive down every night and see how it looks to determine what wattage we're going to need. But I'm hoping we can use the full $50,000 from 2019 and $50,000 from 2020 to replace as many of these streetlights as possible. Beyond that, everything in the report, we did send out awareness proclamations for Suicide Prevention Month and Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. We often get requests from outside organizations as time goes on. That is, that is it.
Any questions or comments for the Mayor Safety Director? Thank you, Mayor. Report to Communications from the Director of Law.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just wanted to inform council that before we went into recess, we did a committee meeting discussing garbage and the Kimball contracts. Just want to update council on that, that we have been negotiating with Kimball, and they currently have some amendments to the contract in their hands right now that they're reviewing. So we might be coming to council suitless and changes in our garbage contract, which there's some council would find favorable, but I'll update more on that after we end the negotiations with them. The only other thing I have, and I just want everyone to know, there's an upcoming seminar, municipal seminar on social media networking in the public sector dealing with challenges with social networking as it relates to open meetings, public records, contracts, employment, all the laws and other related issues. I have had council people and administrators ask me a lot of questions about this because this is kind of a new area. This is through the Ohio Municipal League. They put on these seminars, they're an hour, they're video, they're video conference, so we could have up to 50 people for the same price look at it. So if anyone is interested in doing something like that, the date is Wednesday, October 24th, 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. So if there is any interest in that, contact myself or contact Sue Ifelis and we can get this set up. That's all I have, thank you.
Any questions or comments for the Law Director? Reports of communications from Council President. I have none. Any amendments or additions to the agenda? Does anybody have any additions or amendments to the agenda? Okay, move on to administrators. Police Chief Vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to my monthly report, which you haven't received yet, we give a monthly report on the second council meetings of each, just because of the way that we collect the data and the way the people who collect the data shift if they work. Well, then you do need it in addition to that. I think we had some conversations about an SRO, having a, the school system wants a more consistent presence of an SRO. So I've been contacting and discussing with Superintendent Speach, and I'm working on getting a part-time police officer hired who will be specifically assigned to the schools for a certain number of hours each week. In addition to that, they desire to have a full-time police officer up there, and in some discussions with Councilman Levon and Mayor Bartish and Mr. Speach, if the levy passes in November, we need to have some serious consideration and work out the nuances of how we're going to split that fee. So that's an ongoing process. I am interviewing next week a person for the part-time SRO position. In addition to that, just over the summer, since we last met, just routine police activities, Viper Deal, the Moonlight, the Fest, everything about, Chief Powers and I have some comments about the Fest, they were hot this year, so I'll let him make some comments about that. That's all that I would have to say.
Any questions or comments to this Chief? Councilman Bogo?
Yes, I would like to thank you. I had a couple citizens get in touch with me on a situation and dealing with the Law Director and the Police Chief. We really worked it out, walked through everything, everything was in compliance, so it was a pleasure with, so thank you. I think we're...
Councilwoman Saloto?
I just had a quick question about the police officers from the schools. So are they looking for one police officer to kind of go between the schools, or just do they want someone in the school, or?
Well, I think ideally they'd like to have a presence in all of the middle schools. I'm not quite sure, but I believe if the full-time position becomes available, if that trend, that asking, well, that person would be assigned to the high school, and then the part-time officers, at least one, maybe another one, go to elementary or middle school. But that's kind of a work in progress. Right now, we provide, we have, I have three officers that are trained in SROs, but they work full-time shift, so like six weeks in a row, they're on night shift, because obviously they can't service that at all. So the school wants a more consistent presence in the schools, so that's why we...
Councilman Sekus.
So one thing, I talked briefly with Chief about this before, and I talked with all the people, I talked with Mr. Speach, a many substation at the, well, the high school is going to be seven through 12. So I thought if you had a two-desk substation, sometime officers, when they have downtime left, they have to go back to the station, whether to do a motor vehicle report or get something to eat, they had something where they could go back and forth to the high school, where they had made a little bit of room for them. This way you have police guards going in and out of the school. If it was feasible, there's people I've talked to that would donate the computers, because I know that would be a cost. But if that would cut the cost with the schools or cut costs with the city, if there's something we could do, I just think that would give a police presence if they're going in and out, back and forth, and they have to go file a report or whatever at the school. That was just something that maybe we can look into the future if it wasn't a big cost. That's certainly something we could look into, I'd talk to Mr. Speach at some point in time.
That's him. Councilman Jaworski.
Randy, with the individual that you're looking to interview, would that be someone who, if that person was brought in work, would be paid for through these schools, or would it be the city that would be paying the salary of that person?
The part-time person, the cost would be borne by the school. So we would fill the, my department, or maybe the finance department, fill out like a monthly pay stub for what that person worked for in a month, give it to the school, the school will pay the city for the check and put in, the refunds may go into your bank in my special account. The full-time officer, we're actually a ways away from that, but we split that cost. The top was 50% each, which includes their income pay and pension, uniform allowance, all those things.
Mayor.
If I could quick just add to that, the thought behind splitting the cost is that we're going to have a full-time officer at the schools, schools not in session year-round. When school's not in session, that person would be on a normal patrol, and then it also helps with their continuity, they're building relationships as these kids are coming out of school. And again, we're still a ways away from finalizing those details, if that was our thought process was that.
Any further questions or comments for the Police Chief? Thank you, Chief Vice. Fire Chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Over the summer, we've had several significant fires, a couple within our city and a couple to our neighbors that would go to assist. One in particular, we had a million-dollar loss. Fortunately, we were able to assist that business, and that business was up within three days running at least one production line. So we're hopeful that he continues on, and it appears that he's continued to rebuild, rebuild the structure. There wasn't a lot of damage to the building, it was just a problem with his line that ultimately caused the fire also. Over the summer, and particularly in the last four weeks, we've had significant problems mechanically with our ambulances, and it's my opinion that our ambulances are probably the most modern vehicle in the city. It's so crucial that we start replacing this equipment now, when the levy's coming up, it certainly needs some support. But our new ambulance is seven years old. Seven years old, running a lot, all day long. It takes a beating. Our third-out ambulance is 18 years old, they challenge anybody that has an 18-year-old vehicle that has to start every time and go. So we're struggling a little bit. Hopefully that'll change here in a couple months when we get a new ambulance. But that goes with a lot of our equipment. It's big, it's heavy, it's durable, but it's not as new as everyone believes it to be. Chief Vice alluded to the Fest. The Fest was the perfect storm this year. We had 40,000 people come, 92 degrees, very high humidity. I'm very pleased to say that we had 30 public safety employees on the site for the day, and they handled it very professionally. We transported 15 people off-site, saw over 40 people, and our UH University Hospitals that helps us first aid saw 350 patients. So it was pretty significant. We had called for some help from other additional neighbors, for ambulances at one point, but nobody waited for assistance, and we were able to help everything. And the festival still continued without interruption, which was good. And finally, we're working with the Economic Development Director, her a little bit, on a couple of things that we come across in fire prevention through our course of daily activities, and she has a couple of needs on some businesses, either that we're moving to retain or expand, so we're helping her out with that. That's all I have to report.
Any questions or comments for the Fire Chief? Councilman Sekus.
Just a quick compliment, I got a call from a resident who lives on Robert Road, who was very sick, very ill, said professionalism, quickness, how happy and over-the-moon talking made for about 20 minutes that you guys were life savers. Thank you for me.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Fire Chief? Thank you, Chief Powers. Finance Director Dolz.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to let you know that the monthly, month-end financial reports are now going to be on Board Docs, so they're accessible there. And the other thing that I wanted to let Council know is that Rita did send out the delinquent letters for tax filings, and they sent those out on August 24 and 27 to reply to that, and then the week of October 8. If people, if residents don't respond to those requests, there will be an administrative subpoena issued, and they will be at the Community Senior Center on October 25th and 26th to clear this up, so.
Any questions or comments, Finance Director? Councilman Jaworski.
With the information just coming to us essentially the last couple of days through your Board Docs, how would you summarize the city's budget at this point in time?
The way it looks is, I think, deceiving. I think that Rita will be starting to send out refunds of income taxes soon, because extensions go until October. So if right now our income tax receipts are down 6.2%, which is about $421,000 from last year. So, but the general fund right now looks pretty healthy, it's $4.5 million. But as I said, I think that that is a little bit deceiving because of the refunds that may be going out. Other than that, I think there's no big surprises. I mean, I think we're running as budgeted we've done. We did have a surprise with the community court sharing costs, which we'll have to deal with in the next little bit here as far as increasing the appropriations, because the first half was actually more than we budgeted for the entire year. So with the change of court, and they got a lot of, rid of a lot of, well, there was a lot of retirements, a lot of payouts, so we share all those costs with the other municipalities.
The decrease in the income tax, is that directly due to the loss of ADB, or is that just, just throughout the city, just other employers?
I, I can't, I can't really answer that direct. I mean, yes, it has to do with ADB, probably a big part of it, losing that income, but as far as individual businesses, I can't really answer that.
Any further questions or comments for the Finance Director? Thank you, Dolz. City Engineer Farmica.
Thank you, Council President. Couple of things to add to my written report, or things that are in it, and also just meeting requests at Council's discretion. I'd like to schedule a meeting with the Upput Avenue, to discuss, I should say, the Upput Avenue request for NOACCA funding. I met with the Economic Development Coordinator with the Mayor last week, and there is a deadline beginning of October, I believe, to, that we can request for funding for improvements or implementation of previous studies that have been done. And we'd like to sit down with the Council just to talk about our options and see what we want to pursue with that.
Pete, are we talking about the Economic Development Committee or the capital improvements rate, which you need for the finance?
I would say capital improvements, because it's more of a, we're looking at improving infrastructure, changing possibly the lane, the way the lanes are working. In order to get this funding, we would need to implement something from our previous studies on that, that's to get ahead in the line to get money, like for a resurfacing project. This would be year, maybe a couple of years down the road, but we need to get an application in now so that we can possibly, kind of, fund.
Pete, this is solely on Upput Avenue?
At this point, yes. We discussed Lakeland Boulevard, and because there was no study done yet on Lakeland Boulevard, our Economic Development, you know, we talked about it, like I said, with Monica, and she wants to, we like to pursue Upput Avenue, at least so that we get our foot in the door, and then also get our foot, or, we've already requested for funding for Lakeland Boulevard, and we were declined last year, so we'd like to request for a study for that. It's all, something that we need to talk about.
Just to confirm one more thing, this isn't going to actually be about us administering any funds, it's all about discussion of how to build this?
Kind of a plan, yeah, a plan of action of, you know, here's what we can go after if we want to do that. We haven't requested anything for any kind of, that kind of magnitude of a project, but we'll have some numbers, we'll have some costs, and say, okay, if we do this, this is what we can expect. So that was one. The other one is, you're probably aware, WOW Communications is looking to put in their cable lines throughout the city. We reviewed their underground portions, their, kind of, something that they put in in the last month was, they wanted, they needed to put in 14 above-ground boxes in our tree lawns, and I would like to, if Council would like to meet with you to discuss those locations, and I can show you a map and, just to talk about that, see if there's any objections to that. So that was another item, maybe put improvements or utilities committee.
Just a quick question on that, is there a timeline on that, or when they plan on installing, or the plans have been submitted, have they been approved in every?
They have, I'm not approving these boxes until I get Council's thumbs up on it, basically. I'm okay with them, I've met with them, the Mayor and I have both met with them, went over the locations, but I just wanted to be sure that that's, because I was considering taking that to Planning Commission as well, but after discussion, we said, well, let's just present it to Council and see, see how you guys feel with that, with these locations. And last, I'd like to schedule a meeting with Council to discuss an easement that the Lake County Department of Utilities has requested from the city to run a waterline from Sherbrook through the woods, basically, of Colby Park, from Sherbrook, the end of Sherbrook to Serenity Drive Lane. They're putting that waterline through there to create a loop, which is going to improve our fire flows and everything else in the city. It's all good, but we need to buy Council on that, so.
I will put the NOACCA funding request into the Economic Development, Upput Avenue Redevelopment Committee, I'll put the WOW telecommunications cabinets into the Utilities Committee, and the easement with Lake County Department of Utilities into the committee as a whole. Is there anything else you're reporting, Mr.?
That's good, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the City Engineer, Councilman Jaworski?
Pete, you said you needed to have a meeting much sooner, rather than waiting for an Economic Development Committee.
Yes.
How about we, would next Monday work for, work for members of the committee? Let's shoot for 7:00 p.m.
Any other questions or comments for the City Engineer?
Should we also schedule the utilities for that same event?
It's not, it's something, Mr. Farmica, it's a committee period. Any other questions or comments for the City Engineer? Thank you, Mr. Farmica.
Thank you.
Service Director, Neil Broja.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to request a meeting in regards to partial road repair, what we did similar on Harrison and Katano, like to get together and talk about that as soon as Council sees fit. Also, during my report, I'd like to say, you know, you may have heard, we had a pretty large, we did, contract to have spill on Upput Avenue of gravel. It was a considerable amount of gravel. Our street sweeper was down, so we couldn't pick it up, and I just wanted to throw kudos out to JAB Supply, we had to call JAB Supply to get their street sweeper out there. We had to shut down Upput Avenue, actually the police department did. The gravel went from Upput Avenue up Lincoln to Ridge Road, up Rockefeller, it was, it was quite a lot. And JAB Supply did send an invoice, but what they specifically asked for was we're going to, I told them we were going to bill the contractor. JAB Supply wasn't looking for reimbursement, they're looking for the company to donate the money to the city, to, specifically to the recreation department, so I just wanted to pass that on. In regards to the Maple Street project, the road project, I did talk to Pete last year, two years ago, we cambered the main sewers, the sanitary and the storm mains on 291st and Elm, we did it again for Maple Street. He looked at the videos, reviewed them, they came out good, so it's probably going to save the city a few bucks that we cambered it ourselves instead of subbing it out. You may have seen the middle cottage, we had, it was a grand through Sherwin-Williams, keep what the beautiful got it, we pressure washed it, stripped the whole building down. They came, I think, Wednesday last week, the Mayor was actually there, had some volunteers paint it, Levon just finished that up, it looks, looks really good. Another one is, I know Council's received some phone calls on the pond, a lot of the algae and the duckweed, had a Metta Company Jones Fish Hatchery, they treated it this year, they kind of got rid of a lot of the algae, a lot of the duckweed is starting to dissipate, they're going to do one more treatment, and then we're going to get a price for next year and try to submit it with next year's budget. Pickleball courts, they're completed, I think Tim's going to talk about pickleball. Street striping, we did start the street striping, they did do the lane lines and the center lines, they do have to come back and do some crosswalk and stop owners. And Club K9, they're located in the city, they donated the new fence where we keep our dog when we, when the police department gets, get stray dogs, actually they went through the police department, and Joe Thompson kind of set this whole thing up, and they built a cage in between the cottages, they did a great job. and they built a cage in between the cottages. They did a great job. We donated that to the city. And that's, I think, was my report.
Any questions or comments for the Service Director? Councilman Dill, hello.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Joe, I just wanted to thank you again for all your help over the summer, especially with the relocation of the grave over at Wicklow Cemetery. My family reached out to me and wanted to just give their best wishes to you guys. Thank you very much for the way it was handled, and I really appreciate everything you did. It was actually a friend of mine who passed away back in 2004. So funny that I first order of business on the cemetery, where he had a grave, but like I said, the family was very grateful for everything that the whole city did, so thank you very much, Joe.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilman Jaworski.
Joe, maybe three or four Saturdays ago now, a couple of you guys were out replacing some traffic lights over on Rockefeller and 84.
Yes, we had an accident, actually, a bucket truck, a light truck, hit the inner, hit the traffic signal at Lloyd and Euclid Avenue. And people saw the truck. Unfortunately, nobody got a license plate, Police Department recalled. Nobody had a license plate. Nobody could see if there was a name on the side of it. So what we had to do was, because it's a programmable light, we had to switch the lights from Rockefeller and put it over at Lloyd so that it would work with the controller that's in the box. Greg Maitai was our traffic guy. He was the lead guy that told us what we needed to do to do it. And we were getting a lot of calls. We did make a repair. We were getting a lot of calls that the signal just wasn't working properly. So his suggestion was to take it from there and switch them out. We haven't had a problem since. It worked out well. That's what that was.
Is there a more overall concerning issue that we should be aware about with the age of some of these traffic lights?
Yes, yes, they are, boy, I think they're from Yates, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, they have some there in age, yes.
We have traffic lights in our annual request for improvements, capital improvements, that, you know, we know that this is a storm that we're heading into that we're going to need to start replacing these lights. And, you know, they're not, not.
The systems need to be upgraded.
We have, however, you know, in order to keep these old lights going, ODOT has donated, they have a warehouse full of old parts that we've requested and received.
Quite a couple of different times, yes.
Yeah, quite a bit of, you know, not controllers and whatnot that fit with the existing system that we have. So if we're able to make repairs, it can keep what we have going.
The equipment's not brand new that they're giving us, but it's better than what we have now. And we've just been switching some of that out when it becomes available.
Do we expect that gravy train to at some point in time leave the station?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Is, are traffic lights something that we could go to NOAC or somebody else for instead of the trains?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Have you been to that? Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for the Service Director? Thank you, Mr. Jay Broja. Building Commissioner Seck.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The only thing I have to add to my report is today you'll see that a six sweeper by Sweet Berries was taken out, and it's all done. We're going to finish that up already today or tomorrow and fill that in, and then they have the house on 300th Street that they'll start just waiting for the CEI to disconnect. That's all I have to say.
Any questions or comments for the Building Commissioner? Councilman Dill, hello.
Yes, Ray, you helped me out over the summer. I gave you some emails and we had some phone communications. I just wanted to thank you for the process and taking care of all the issues that the residents had. So I just wanted to, from the residents, also say thank you for all your help.
Any further questions or comments for the Councilman Jaworski?
Ray, in terms of, do you know when the grass or weed violations, stuff like that, how was the summer compared to other summers?
This was brutal. It was, there was so much rain, and so much, you know, rain came and the grass grew, and then just, it was brutal. And we've had a lot of complaints through property maintenance, so it's been, we've been really busy up there.
Has he been able to keep up on that?
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments for the Building Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Seck. Recreation Director Staub.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just have a couple of things to add to my written report. I want to thank Council and the Mayor for their support of our summer activities. Everything from our concerts in the park, our car show, to our summer camp program, movies in the park, or end of the season, Lou Al, you'll see in my report some pictures, sometimes pictures are worth a thousand words, and appreciate your support in those areas. Also, I'd like to thank those for their support for our first-ever Christmas in July 5K jog and one-mile run. First time we ever did that. Very happy with the results of that. Had about 159 runners participate in our first-ever run, and I had raised about $4,900 to benefit the Holiday Helping Hand Program. So I wanted to thank you guys for your support. Just a couple of quick numbers for you, pool-wise for the summer. Overall, our attendance was up a little bit. When you look at the Aquatics Center Orlando and Ginger, they were up to 20,332 visits this year compared to 18,466 visits last year in 2017. Revenue was up slightly from 18 to 17. This year, we had about $81,366 of revenue come into the pool compared to $80,444 compared to 2017. I know that's a lot of different numbers to throw at you. Another set of numbers I'd like to throw at you is I'm in conversation with a couple of different rec software programs to help with the registration, scheduling, reservations, different reports for the Recreation Department programs, being able to give us internet access to credit card payment for some of our classes. So I wanted Council to be made aware that we are investigating a couple of different companies for that. And last but not least, I brought my visual aids. Pickleball is coming to Ginger Park. Basically, the Service Department turned one of our tennis courts into two pickleball courts. They did a beautiful job on it. Hopefully, you guys can come down and take a peek at it. Next Monday at 6:30, we're going to have a demo from contact from the YMCA. They're going to come out and talk about the rules, hands-on demonstration. Whoever wants to play can come out and play. Thanks to Parks and Recreation Commission for their interest in this. Thanks to Wicklow Forever for purchasing the nets and the posts. And once again, thank you to the Service Department for really doing a bang-up job on Pete. And to have a company come out and do it, it was, I think, costing about $10,000 to do it, and I'm not sure what the cost on the paint was, but they did it for, I'm sure, a portion of the price. So anybody who would like to try out pickleball, it's going to be here. Basically, it's a wooden paddle and a wiffle ball, and you hit it back and forth, kind of like tennis, kind of like badminton on a shorter court. Ball doesn't go as far as a tennis ball. So it's the latest and greatest new activity that's going to be coming to Wicklow at Ginger Park. That concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? Councilwoman McCaskey?
Yes.
As far as the Christmas in July job, I'd also like to thank Corrigan's for all the hard work in getting all the sponsorship and getting the whole thing together and...
Absolutely.
And I do believe there is a golf outing next...
For Keep Look Beautiful, next Saturday, correct.
Yes, 15th at Greenridge Golf Course.
Correct.
And I'm sure there are still openings available.
Yes, yeah. Eddie Powers in charge of that one, Keep Look Beautiful, so they will have an outing next week.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the Recreation Director? Thank you, Mr. Staub. I'll now open the floor to audience participation. If you'd like to address with the City Council, please stand and state your name for the clerk's records. Each person will have a five-minute maximum amount of time. Would anyone like to address with the City Council? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Hi, Mary Acton, 3020 Long Region Row. First, I'd like to know, Route 2 Eastbound, you exited 305 to turn right. Is that the city of Wicklow?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, where?
Route 2 East to exit 305, and you're going to turn right.
Oh, and you're going to turn right?
Correct, coming off the ramp. Is that, would that be the city of Wicklow?
It's close or something.
Or is it going to be Willoway?
I'm going to say that's Willoway.
Okay, never mind. Because someone's going to get creamed there. I've almost gotten creamed three times. It's a no-turn, right on red, and people always turn right. I'm saying that's a money opportunity for the city of Wicklow, for camera.
You know what, I'm going to go, I know exactly who you're talking about. I'll leave in contact, Willoway.
Okay.
Eastbound, getting off at 305.
305.
So you're saying taking a right-hand turn.
Like it's a right-hand turn to go to Lakeland, okay. My second comment is for Chief Ice, Chief Powers. I'm not going to get emotional. On the evening of July 10, you responded to a call, and I thought, oh, good, you're going to the drug house. But you didn't. You went to my neighbor's house, who was in cardiac arrest. Officer Mary Fields was the first responder. Your whole station responded, Chief Powers. Officer Mary Field, your dispatcher, Chief Ice, told my neighbor how to give her husband CPR. Chief Officer Mary Field was the first responder. He got him off the bed. He continued CPR. With your whole house responding, and Officer Mary Field, my neighbor lived, a person who is in full cardiac arrest, the chance of someone living is 6%. So, but that being said, I applaud you. We were at Lake West, and not only being there, your paramedics came back. They came back and they came into the room to make sure we were doing okay, to see if we needed anything, to see if they could get anything for us. So I am proud to say that I am a citizen of Wicklow, and I will support your love and do anything I can because my neighbor is alive. No brain damage, which is unheard of, and the fact that he is alive is crazy at how fast they responded. Your officers and your station responded. That 6% chance is just, he's a miracle. He's a miracle that he's alive and well. So from the bottom of my heart to the bottom of his heart, we thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address with the City Council? Ma'am, in the back.
Alice Steny, 2890 Euclid Avenue. I was here in the early spring concerning a wall that belonged to Ganley Motors, which is supposed to be holding up our property and isn't. Also, the fence had collapsed. In June, a front-end loader came out and pushed that old fence back up, and there are boards missing out of it. They pounded some pipes into the ground to hold it up, and those pipes are being held up by the wall, which is collapsing. Right only in June that wall would be rebuilt with stone. And then the two or three times I've talked to him since, I've gotten no satisfaction. He gives me silly excuses like, oh, well, they're wondering if they should get more quotes on that wall. And then the last time, he told me he'd been on vacation, so I didn't know. I've gotten no satisfaction out of this, and our property is collapsing into that parking lot, which this city okay years ago, and I would like something done about it. I've been told already it would be done, but nothing. And I would also, that fence is collapsing already. What good does it do to push the fence up when there's no wall to hold it? So would you please, please, do something? We've been in that house almost 50 years. We've been in this city more than 50 years. We deserve a little respect. Thank you.
Councilman McCaskey.
Ray, do you need some of us on council to call?
I haven't talked to Mr. Steny about this, but I did talk to Mike Kenpoa during the Bachi tournament, and he said, before the snow flies, that they're going to repair that again. Because I told him, it's just not, it's just not working out yet. And I didn't have the chance to stop and replace it, but he's the general manager of Ganley, and he sure, he says, either we're going to repair it or just replace it.
Well, Ray, you know, we've been through this before.
Yes.
And all I get is excuses. And I mean, this has been, it took three years at least.
Ma'am, please address with the City Council, okay? We'll get on this. Councilman Jaworski.
Ray, did you cite Ganley for this fence?
Yes, I did.
And it's been 30 days, 60 days?
They repaired the fence. They repaired the fence. It was leaning off, and they repaired the fence. It goes and just went some repair in there and some posts in there. And then I had seen Mike at the end of August, and I told him that that wall needs to be repaired or replaced. So that's where I ended. And he said, might as well replace the fence also. I said, yeah, that would be good too.
Ray, can you follow with him again this week? Follow up with him? Make sure he gets that.
Yes.
Any questions or comments for the Building Commissioner? Or I'm sorry. Anybody else like to address with the City Council? Yes, sir.
My name is Molly Slavik, 29515 Bridge. I filled in a pool years ago. I had a little indent where I wanted some more dirt. Had a contractor come and dump dirt there, and your building commissioner, well, he's had his house a good time, and he knows the issues. I've known Ray for 35 years, at least, okay? I went through some stuff with him from getting ripped off, robbed, everything else. But, okay, he gives me a stop at the SIS on my mailbox when I left to go to the store. He was right there, okay? Why am I getting harassed? It shows that you could fill your yard two to four inches. I didn't raise my yard two feet like he did, okay? We get flooded in, okay? My yard gets flooded because of that. I mean, I've been going through three majors now. All right, and I mean, you guys do nothing about it. Okay, look, the house on Euclid Avenue, the grown house, what's that? You guys could put a fence up, at least. Brick are falling out of there. Okay, the houses, there's rats there. I mean, does anybody care? You guys care about the city? No, I do. I grew up here. I raised a family here. It's going to hell, all right? You've got somebody that doesn't give a crap in the building commission. All he does is picks his shoes, his little friends, and he, I mean, he's given so many violations to people. He gave me a violation to paint my shed when I didn't have one. Okay, he took me to court because I tried to collect money from the job that I did for him, okay? Didn't get paid. I got violations. I got told, hey, I'll put you on a list. And then every time somebody calls for a referral, you'll be the first one they call. I don't know. I told my bill clerk, but they said, no, that's no good. So, I mean, come on, you guys got to do something. Get a qualified person in there. I mean, you get, you go get a salesman, here's a bill, because he's Korean Father Dan. What's he inspecting? Does it pass? If you inspect something, what happens if it falls down? Whose fault is that? I mean, come on, we need some quality in this city, all right? I mean, I've been harassed and everything else. I mean, I was taken to court, okay? I called a news herald person, a reporter. I told him that. All of a sudden, the charges all dropped. I still had to pay $180 for court costs. I mean, it's just, it's total harassment and everything else. He's got friends in the city. Soon as they have a problem, well, don't worry about it. I'll violate them for him. All right, I mean, he spreads stuff out about me, but I don't care. It's, I'm a man. I'm strong. All right, I don't care. But we need something, okay? I mean, we need something. My yard gets flooded. My neighbor's yards get flooded every other time. In the back park there, I mean, you've got a ravine in the back park behind our fence in Levi Park. All right, the water's got to fill up to get to the sewers. The sewers are always clogged. Look by the baseball bat there. You got a piece of concrete. The water has to go up here to go over and go into the sewer. Our yards get flooded. What do we do? It's landline property. Yeah, we maintain it. Can't use it because it's always flooded. I mean, it's just a little thing. I mean, Pete Formica called one of the past majors about the problems we have, how people raise our property. I mean, he swears it was up and down. It was virgin soil, but it was, it was filled in recently at that time. I mean, I just got the problem. I hope you guys take care of something. something. Appreciate your time.
Would anyone else that you'd address with the City Council? Anyone else that you'd address with the City Council? If not, our audience participation closed. Committee reports. Councilwoman Gallo.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. I'd like to schedule a committee meeting next Monday for...
7:30.
7:30, PM?
Sure.
What's this?
For Wildcell Communications Governance?
Yes.
I'd like to schedule a legislation and welfare committee meeting. I guess it would be 7:45 Monday?
Sure.
To discuss something that was left in committee before break, rental registration, rental property registration.
Yeah, why that 7:45 on September 17th? Any other committee reports? Commission reports? Councilwoman Sackus?
Okay, yes. I'd like to share Parks and Recreation Commission 2018 summer. Tim took a little bit of the thunder from this, so I'll try not to overlap. Okay. In June, Commission went on its annual park tour. The Commission toured all the parks and generally found them to be in great shape. The Commission found few minor items that were quickly taken care by Jody and the Service Department. There were three recommendations from the Commission this year for the parks. At Ginger, they recommended that the walking path be repaired or replaced and widened. Also, at Ginger, they recommended that the fence be repaired or replaced. And the final recommendation is to start charging a fee for pavilion rentals to help offset upkeep and improvements to the parks. The Commission and Recreation Department helped the city's first 5K, so you guys heard about that. It made $4,900 for the Helping, Howdy Helping Hand program, and they received great feedback from the participants, how well it was run and what a nice course it was. And the Commission wanted to express its gratitude to all the generous sponsors, volunteers, participants, the service and police departments, and to all the residents that came out to support the 5K. It was such a wonderful showing of what a great community this is. On September 17th at 6:30, the grand opening of the new pickleball court will take place in Ginger Park. And just wanna again, just say thank you to Wickliff Forever Foundation for the donation of the nets and courts, and to the service department who painted the tennis courts into two pickleball courts and installed the nets. So, those are the highlights of what the Commission has been working on this year and now to go over. The Commission would also like to take a moment and just share some concerns and dismay that we're not given the opportunity to discuss and make recommendations to Mayor and Council on two very important changes in policy that occurred this year. The issues of allowing alcohol consumption and sales within the parks, and the opening of the pools to non-residents are the various types of issues that should be brought to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Commission's made up of residents specifically charged with the duty of advising council and the recreation director as to the development, operation, and administration of the public park system. These issues not only failed to make it to the Parks and Recreation, but also not put into the Parks and Properties committed for council consideration. We did discuss the alcohol issue during our meeting. Afterwards, brought up in council, we generally agree with the idea of allowing alcohol sales and consumption in the park, but with tight regulation and under certain conditions. We have concerns that the current implementation by council could open up the city with issues in the future. The issue of allowing non-residents to purchase pool passes was another change in operation to the parks that we and our council were made aware of or allowed the opportunity to discuss prior to implementation. We also recently discovered that pool passes were made available for purchase to the employees of Lubrizal and the families of students at Modern Day and All Saints Schools in the city. We had a very short discussion during our last meeting about this discovery, but nothing deep enough to really share an insight from the group about this time. I will share some of my initial concerns, questions if pool passes were going to be offered these entities. Why was this not offered to our other entities in the city? Since the pool passes have been allowed to be sold potentially to the non-residents, does that mean that we will legally be required opening the pools to all non-residents? Residents have in the past strongly opposed the opening to the pools to non-residents. The new policy adjustment to allow non-residents to our employees of certain corporations to purchase pool passes appears to be a contradiction to the will of the residents. Residents' potential concerns do not appear to have been considered in this policy change. To reiterate, these policy changes to the operation of the park should have been brought to the Commission for discussion and our recommendation to council and the recreation director. This concludes my report, and then...
Councilwoman Sackus.
I would like to put charging for pavilion rental into Parks and Properties Committee.
Charging for pavilion rental to Parks and Properties Committee.
Yes.
Councilman Jaworski.
I guess I will direct this question to the Lider. I was under the belief that it was council through ordinances that regulated who could purchase pool passes and who could not. Do we have that authority, or is that solely in the administration?
You know, going from the top of my head, I don't have the total front of me. Councilman Jaworski. I have looked at the pool before. Like I said, rec department can adopt regulations and policies. Residents are discussed in a language, I don't know if it says in the ordinance itself, that it's only open to residents. I'm not, I wouldn't quote me, I'm not sure that language is in there. I know there is language about, there is some...
It says residents must present a valid aquatic pass upon each visit to gain admittance to the city's pool facility and spray park.
Yeah, do you? Well, I don't, I want to be honest. Does it have any language saying it's only open to residents? Pool admission?
I can't see specific language in there, but since it wasn't in there, I always thought that it was just strictly for the city residents only. Maybe that's not the correct ordinance I have, Scott.
This is the, this is the pool ordinance. The only thing, the only thing it says in the ordinance is, it says, uh... Just says residents must present a valid aquatic pass upon each visit to gain admittance to the city's pool facilities. That's only language that actually addresses it.
I'd like to voice my displeasure on this. I think that allowing, selectively allowing certain non-residents to use the city pools is opening us up for a major lawsuit, some kind of discrimination lawsuit. We were saying, this room can, this room can, this room can, this room can. And it's, that's very wrong. I know that past councils had met over that issue. The one day there were somewhat 100, 150 people in here, and they were very much against that. And I am absolutely against letting non-residents use our pools.
Councilwoman Sackus.
I just wanna say, you know, the whole reason of the Parks and Recreation Commission is something that's gonna be dealt with in the parks, whether it be pool passes or whatever. The whole point of that is residents made up, so they can bring it to council to discuss. So, obviously, that was avoided here, and...
Mayor.
Nothing was avoided on the topic of selling alcohol. It's not the jobs Park and Recreation Commission to discuss or create legislation. That was done in committee, that was agreed upon, that was voted, that was passed. In terms of the pool passes, I need to clarify that it wasn't open to all non-residents. There was the families and children who attend the schools in our city. We're already allowing these people to come into our city. The thousand people that work at Lubrizal, that come into Lubrizal and make up a good chunk of our income, I offer it to them as well. And then the folks that are members of swim team. There's some families that live in Kirtland or Chardon, for example, that bring their kids to swim team, but then they can't, which makes no sense whatsoever. So, in terms of discrimination, I think that's a bit ridiculous to think that someone could sue us if they work at a different company and they can't use our pool or not. None of this is based on age, race, religion, anything. There could be a good trial run to a few of the organizations that already come into the city, and then Lubrizal being sort of a good faith, large employer. It would go from there. We had maybe Recreation Department of, Tim, how many, 15, 20 families take advantage of that? I know the swim team will be, everyone will be taking advantage of that next year. And if anyone has a problem with people dropping their children off to school, or dropping their children off to the pools, but then to tell them their families can't come back, it's a bit ridiculous. And if, I'm, I'm the CEO of the city, I'm not concerned about a lawsuit in regards to any of my actions regarding pool passes. 15, 20 people maybe?
It was a low amount of family passes for Lubrizal. There were four family passes that were sold for a total of 18 people. Modern Day had one family pass with six people on it, and nobody from the swim team took advantage of our...
And that was a bit late in the season, but I know Monica or Marshall said they would be, you know, coming next year. So, and that's my comment on that. Councilwoman Sackus.
I get it. So, but I'm just saying, as far as like PCC, or there's other companies that, so if they catch wind of it, that's all I'm saying is, why weren't we offered this? But non-residents is non-residents straight up. And I just want, a resident called me and asked a family member, and I said they live in the city, to get a non-resident. I said no. So I just don't want to mislead anybody in any way. And that's kind of what my concern. But Parks and Recreation, they come at the meeting, they ask me, and I'm their representation, and that was one of their biggest concerns. So I just want to relay that.
Councilwoman Gallo.
Is this request where, like a lot of times when pavilions are rented out, and they rent the pool?
No, this isn't a splash party.
Okay, it's not a splash. So we're talking about people that would get a full-time pass to use at any time. That's...
I guess I'll just voice my displeasure as well. I've been through meetings, and I've always been raised in the city, and we always kept our pools to non, to residents only. And we've had meetings here where there wasn't 150 people here sitting everywhere over this, multiple chairs standing throughout the whole meeting, that residents do not want non-residents in their pools. I think this should have been brought to the council at least, let alone the commission, that we should have heard about it before finding out from other people, from other residents, that people are doing this. Please notify council. I think you're wrong for doing this. I also think, you know, we could potentially get in a lawsuit. If people, other people want to do it, we tell them no.
Councilwoman Salo.
I have to agree with that. I mean, as much as certainly I am number one person who wants to do good faith things to Lubrizal, with Lubrizal. I mean, certainly, I mean, they're really important to our city, but we still have to think about the fact that there are other really important businesses here. There are other factions of people that may want to use our pools, and we can't just pick and choose who we want to give that opportunity to. I think there is potential for a lawsuit. I truly do. So I think we have to, I think about that next year.
Councilman Jaworski.
Scott, if you could just please look at it into that, and just get back to this next council meeting, just to see if that's...
It's an area of...
If it's a council issue or if it's an administration issue, please. Thank you.
Councilwoman Salo. Commissioner report?
I do have a official report. So I just have the Keep Wickliff Beautiful Commission report for September. First of all, the litter report. The annual litter index was held in July. This is a requirement to keep America beautiful, to keep our good standing as an affiliate member. Volunteers inspected 50 designated areas in the city for litter and ranked them from one to four, depending on the amount of trash they see. And the 2017 rating was 1.16, and it improved to 1.08 in 2018, indicating little, little, little or no litter in the city of Wickliff. The Euclid Avenue RAN cleanup was held on August 4th. Went very well. It was held prior to the fest. 20 volunteers collected 40 bags of trash. We partnered with Keep Euclid Beautiful on this RAN cleanup. And the next Bishop Grove cleanup will be scheduled for late September or October. With respect to recycling, Keep Wickliff Beautiful hosted a paper shredding event on Saturday, the 8th, collected 3,280 pounds of paper. There were 190 cars that attended the event, and seven volunteers donated 18 hours of time, valued at $445. Keep Wickliff Beautiful collected $17 in donations during the event. They also handed out 9 gold batteries to those attending. The painting project, Keep Wickliff Beautiful received an Ohio, Keep Wickliff Beautiful painting grant to paint the public building in the city. And I know, you talked a little bit about that already, Joe, so I don't need to go too much more into that. But, there were 17 volunteers who donated 30 hours of their time, valued at $740 to project and completed the painting in two and a half hours. The value of the paint provided by Sharon Williams is estimated to be around $1,200. And the Service Department prepped a billion prior to painting volunteers. The battery grant, that's kind of a really cool thing. Keep Wickliff Beautiful received a grant from Duracell of 9 gold batteries. They received 18,480 9 gold batteries from Duracell, valued at $63,664. They were able to use them for smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, other household safety devices. Every fire department east of the Cuyahoga River, with the exception of Cleveland, to the Estre Bula County line, and as far south as Macedonia, received free smoke detector batteries for their community's battery replacement program. And Chief Powers estimated that we served an area of more than 700,000 residents, including Lake Joppet and Cuyahoga Counties. Batteries were also distributed to the Wickliff Senior Center in Lake County, Health District. Keep Wickliff, Keep Euclid Beautiful and Keep Metro Beautiful each received a box of 210-count batteries for their programs. And finally, the new trash cans. Keep Wickliff Beautiful solicited $10,000 in funding from area businesses to purchase 16 new trash cans for Euclid Avenue. We partnered with Lake Tran, partnered with Lake Tran, who is our biggest contributor, along with Tapestry Wickliff, Lubrizal, Partner Hanifin, and Mayor Barvish. Keep Wickliff Beautiful funded the remainder of the cost. The cans will replace the old metal trash cans that were rusted and no longer be able to be restored or repaired. And then finally, an article was published in the News Herald regarding the project and its sponsors. That's all.
Councilman Jaworski.
Planning Commission met in July, and they approved a conditional use permit at 30113 Euclid Avenue for a marijuana dispensary. The planning commission will be meeting again on October 4th.
Mayor Commissioner reports.
Seeing old business move on to new business. Mayor's appointment to charter review commission?
Yes, and this was, one of the gentlemen hadn't been showing up, so removing him and replacing it. But thankfully, one of the residents had been attending for almost the entire time, and she was up to date on the conversations. Do you guys have any full names or no? Okay, was it removing Cameron Mays and appointing Donna White? I apologize if I have names wrong.
Yeah, it's not in board docs. Sorry.
So removing Cameron Mays, appointing Donna White.
I like the first mayor's appointment of Donna White to charter review commission.
With the term...
To expire...
Maybe June or July.
It's the same as Cameron's, yes.
Yeah.
She's replacing Cameron, so I have that date, so I can, I can vote.
An unexpired term.
An expired term.
I'll fill in an expired term.
Moved by Councilman McCosky, seconded by Councilman Jaworski to reaffirm the mayor's appointment of Donna White to the charter review commission to replace Cameron Mays in an unexpired term. Discussion? Say anything, so we all...
Vandalillo?
Yes.
Fogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Salo?
Yes.
The business be executive session to consider the sale of real property? Or move that to item number 18, move adjournment to 19? Move on to ordinance?
Ordinance number 2018-42. Ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of streets of the city of Wickliff, Ohio by supplying said streets with electric streetlighting and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bianluo, seconded by Councilman, first, Councilman McCosky, to suspend the rules of city council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash forty-two on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the role.
Vandalillo.
Yes.
Fogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Adoption. Second. Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bianluo, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash forty-two as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the role.
Vandalillo.
Yes.
Fogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilman Bianluo, seconded by Councilman McCosky, to suspend the rules of city council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash forty-three on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the role.
Vandalillo.
Yes.
Fogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Resolutions?
Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Second. Moved by Councilman Bianluo, seconded by Councilman Saloto, to suspend the rules of council and place resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the role.
Vandalillo.
Yes.
Fogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Adoption. Second. Moved by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Sackus, to adopt resolution two